Oh man, sorry, I shouldn't be sharing now.
Oh.
Nice.
Welcome to the introduction.
Oh, this is the one I got halfway through.
This is where you're halfway through. Now, that's a great point. Now, one thing I do is I read the introduction, like the whole in- introduction paragraph. And then after that, I just skip, I'd read every other para- every other paragraph. And that's kind of how I get through the readings each week.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure what everyone else's technique is. So feel free to to jump up as to what your technique is for reading. How do you read the words?
I I you, I load it up on my iPad and then I just read it and highlight it. And if there's like something where I wanna make a note, I'd literally just write it on. But like, if you don't have like an iPad or something, print it out and highlight it, I think is an easy way of doing it.
You didn't highlight it, fair enough. Well, unfortunately, we cut off print my screen. Oh, sorry, go ahead for me.
Oh, I said I print mine out as well.
Okay, cool, fair enough. Nice and physical. Alright, um, since I'm sharing screen, do I have to read it out? Or someone will be a reader? I'm reading it out online.
It's like primary school.
And then, come on, everybody, make sure we all read it together.
He's in the first paragraph.
Alright, so I'm gonna read the first paragraph out loud.
If no one, if no one offers to read, I'm gonna choose someone at random.
I'm gonna choose someone at random.
And then you look like away from the teacher so they don't make eye contact with you.
But I don't know, there's no cameras on, so I didn't, I end up looking at myself and I have to choose, I keep reading on and on. But anyway, so yeah. Um, what is human geography? Now, the academic subject of geography has a mixture of fortunes throughout its history. The ancient Greeks, Yanni, saw geographical knowledge as one of the leading forms of scholarship. And the birth of modern geography placed it at the forefront of expanding Western empires in the eighteenth and nineteenth centuries. However, geographers were also at the forefront of ideas in a darker phase of history in the twentieth century. And caught up in ideologies leading to the First and Second World Wars, not a good time. In the latter part of the twentieth century, the subject also lost status, not prestigious. After the Second World War, some questioned the coherence of a subject that spans the natural science of a physical geography and the social science of human geography. Harvard University, can I get a whoop?
What?
A whoop. Nah.
Someone already left.
It was that bad. Harvard Geography, yeah, we were thirteen. The the polls, the polls quickly showing it, showing it some. Showing itself. But um, yeah, Harvard University actually closed its geography department in nineteen forty-eight, more or less for this reason. Moreover, in the English-speaking world, the latter, or the later twentieth century, saw geography lampooned in popular culture as backward-looking. All about the names of capital cities, rivers, and drawing maps. By the nineteen seventies, comedians on television and film gained laughs from stereotypes of geography teachers. Perhaps based on caricatures of teachers boring students with facts about far-fetched places. In British culture, BBC comedies such as The Goodies and later Blackadder, now endlessly repeated on cable television or cable channels worldwide. Portrayed geography teachers as objects of ridicule. In North America, portrays or portrayals have tended to off. The hmm, to be of a dull subject that wasn't cool. However, in the twenty-first century, geography as a whole and human geography as part of that has enjoyed a far-reaching rejuvenation. In the last thirty years, the subject has enjoyed renewed interest. And popularity and influential people beyond the academic world have once again started to echo the seventeenth-century philosopher John Locke. In proclaiming geography as being, uh, to be one of the most useful and important subjects. Rather than being perceived as a weakness, it being both a natural and social science is once again increasingly seen as a strength. There are several reasons for this renewal. In part, it's due to do with the significant evolution of what human geographies, geographers study. And how they go about theorizing the social world. It is also to do with how the world has changed, most notably as we live in a world in the early twenty-first century. In one way or another, is increasingly globalized. At the time of writing this book, the current president of the Royal Geographical Society in London is in fact the former Monty Python comedian. Now famed global traveler, Michael Palin. It is perhaps symbolic of the reversal in the subject's fortunes that such a high-profile figure should invest energy into championing the subject of geography. Undoubtedly, the reversal in geography's fortunes reflects a wider recognition. That many of the current and big challenges that face the world today are well addressed by the subject. Globalization, climate change, sustainability, economic development, or poverty reduction. Yet it is also about reinvigoration of the theoretical ideas in the half of the discipline that the book deals with, human geography. In that respect, dealing with the first half rather than the whole subject, this book is unique in the basics series. To understand geography in its entirety, you may well want to invest in the companion volume, Physical Geography, The Basics. But human and physical geography are intricately linked through geography's long interest in the relation between the social and natural worlds. And the ways that many issues, most notably that of our environment, require knowledge and understanding of both. Alright, the bit actually matters. So what is human geography? What is it all about? Human geography is concerned with all aspects of human society on earth, but in particular adapts a spatial approach. If any of the distinguishing features marks a subject out from other social science subjects, is this concern to think spatially about the social world? In that respect, human geographers share an interest in enormous range of topics that are also of concern of other social science disciplines. What makes a discipline perspective different, however, is what many thinkers in the subject call a geographical imagination. Human geographers think about how things exist in space, how features of the social world change across spaces. And the difference that places make to the nature of human existence. They are also concerned with the unevenness of human existence in space and between different places. This rests on the basic philosophical viewpoint, that everything that happens on human life occurs at a certain space and time. Geographers often use this, oh, I moved it too much. Someone help me.
What do you want me to do? I can scat. Technical issues.
Okay, here we go, I found it. A geographer's often used the clever effort tat that all social life, one way or another, takes place. That is, everything in human life has to happen somewhere, and that somewhere along the relations to a lot of somewhere else's matters in terms of what actually happens. Alright, so I'm saying that's the introduction, I mean, did it there. So does any, so what do we think, uh, human geography or, yeah, human geography is? It's not a quiz, by the way.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to say that as with a lot of readings this year, I feel like a lot of it is like general information. That's like making it long for no reason. Like, I, okay, I like Monty Python, but I don't really care that he's. Like, it's, it's like, why would I care that the National Geographic Society is a, uh, press that's a cool guy? I don't care.
Yeah.
Like, if you like, like, okay, this is like, and and another one, it said about stats about how much newspapers sold in the last week. Okay, cool, I don't really care. Anyway. Um, but yeah, like the way I, uh, understood cultural geography was basically just like. Taking, um, we, basically viewing everything through geography, which in this, uh, article, it said that it's like. Uh, it includes like various, uh, factors, like, hmm, uh, economy, stuff like that. Wait, I think I have them written down. Uh, but yeah, it's like, it basically relates everything to place. And a really good example that I saw in there was, uh. That industries developing certain cities or regions for reasons related to the specific nature of those places. So for, for example, like in Greece, I know that we have cities around coal mines. And they're like, their tourism and like, they were like working a lot in the past. But now their tourism is basically based around fancy rocks. It's, it's just like, it, it kind of like. That's the city and like obviously it affects their language and stuff. For like example, they might say like, um. Many phrases or like sayings that have like things about rocks in them. I, it's, it's very specific, but, um, so for example, like being from a place, if. And I think in the UK, like when you're from ports and stuff, like places that have ports, like ports.
Yeah.
Or like that, I don't really know many British ports, Liverpool or something. Your life is very different, like the, the, from the way you speak, like from the way you make money. Everything, like the economy, the markets, the way the city functions and the reason it was built. And therefore, everything that happens inside it is, uh. Um, has come from like the geography of it. And that, yeah, that's like, it, it's, it's taken geography basically and it says it's not just like, ooh, maps. It's also like, uh, things, any things that, when you consider a location, it's geography. Because it said geography can be online as well, because you can go to a place, a location, that's basically things you like. So for example, if you go to the, a culture made of algorithms subreddit. Then you'd have, like, it's, it's, it is a place, it's not a physical one, but it is like somewhere that people gather and stuff. And then it was, um, yeah, that, that's basically my take, because then I would have gone into the other reading, but I'm gonna try to avoid that.
Now, fair enough. Does anybody else wanna add to that?
Um, I was just gonna say, like, I was just gonna say, like, I agree with that, like, that's a good point, because like. It, certain places where you live have like higher rates of unemployment and stuff like that, so that's why there's a lot of. People that move away from where they're from, like to improve their job prospects and stuff.
Yeah, that's a good point. Actually brings up, oh, go ahead, Yanni.
I was gonna say, and you, you see the difference when people move up, because it's like, in a lot of cities. When people have left because of unemployment, they're in like the new cities that have been built. It's like, in, in many places, there are like, uh, shops that are, for example, like in London, I mean, there's a lot of Polish shops. Because there's a lot of people moving from Poland to work in the UK. And like, there are like, it's basically, or like Chinatown, for example. Yeah, i- i- it's, it's just like, it's a part of them, like, because Chinatown is so different when it's normal. It's built in the style of many Chinese neighborhoods. It, it's very commercialized, so it's kind of ruined, but it's still, uh, I mean, like, because for example, in Greece. Uh, we have this place that people from an island move to Athens to work. And they, they build houses in the style of Greek islands. So in the middle of Athens, there's this neighborhood that's called Anafiotika. Because the people were from Anafi, so it's basically Anafiotika means the neighborhood of the people from Anafi. And there, it's, it's in the middle of Athens and it's built as island homes. Because that's the only thing they knew, but that's not really practical in Athens.
Right, right, right. So it's like they, they brought a piece of their, their culture with them. Um, I think both you and Jade have like touched on this idea of like melting pots. So I think the idea came quite, um, for those of you unaware, um, or wanna refresh off. The idea of a melting pot was in America, um, after the end of slavery, a lot of, um, former slaves. African-Americans moved north, um, and what was described as like this melting pot of experiences. Where you had Irish migrants and other European migrants that, uh, moved to New York, also ended up mingling with, um, South, uh, East. South Americans, well, African-Americans from the South into places like Chicago and ended up with like districts and cities. But then the cities themselves had an identity that was a mixture of everybody. Um, so I think you've both definitely touched on those things, because now Athens is kind of shaped by the, you say Amalfi peoples?
Uh, yeah, Anafi.
Anafi, sorry. Amalfi coast is beautiful. Yeah, so, um, so yeah. So whoops, my bad. So yeah, you've got, um, yeah, you've got like, you, you have a city that has its own heritage, just now mixed in with, um, people who have migrated there. And have added to that culture, but also have brought a piece of their own culture to it.
Is, is there not like a similar neighborhood in the UK? Because in Greece, there's a lot of like, uh, different styles of building. Because of different people moving there. I'd imagine it's in the UK as well, but I don't know.
I mean, the UK is more has like a historical, like, building upon, so like the roads are Roman, and then you've got like Victorians and Georgians and Edwardians. And all of those buildings, all of those building types change, yeah. And then you get industrial, the industrial age has, you know, a completely different style of house. Um, because you can get townhouses still in parts of London, um, and you, because, and also because London has expanded. Every few years, it gets a little bit bigger, because it just incorporates the next neighborhood along it kind of thing. It just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So then you've got like suburbs are now a part of London as well, and they get all incorporated. Does, um, I think Jade wants to say something.
No, I was just agreeing.
I wa- I was also gonna say another huge thing that's affected by like surroundings and stuff. Which really, I think, goes into character is food, because like, in the UK, um. I don't, I don't wanna go into the UK food, but. Like, i- i- in the UK, it's very like roast-centered.
Yeah.
And it's like, it's like, it's like heavy meats and stuff, I'd describe it that way. But it's, it's mostly roasts. Like, when you go into traditional foods from like the UK, it's mostly roasts. And, uh, obviously, there's fish because of like the sea around you. But in, in, in Greece, it's like a different style. It's also like the way you eat. For example, like the further up north, I think, in Europe, the more, from what I've experienced at least, it's the more like, uh. It's not that chatty unless you have an event. It's, it's just like, oh, we're eating. But in Greece, like when, like, uh, the whole summer, you're basically going out to eat and you're going to taverns and stuff. And you're fighting over people who, who's gonna pay for the, for the meal. But I don't see the same thing. Like, you can't, because like in, i- in Greece, like, from April, basically, you can go to the beach until October. So it's, every shop is like out there, it has like no, uh, no roof, it's out, it's outdoors. But with the, in a, in the UK, you basically, all of the shops are exterior, so when they, uh, all, I mean, in here. But all, when the heat comes, it's so much worse in the UK, because it's not, it, it wasn't like this. Like, the location is obviously affected by the weather as well. We were saying that in the, in last week's seminar. But it's, uh, yeah, like we talked about it too, Omar, as well. The, the heat in the UK, like, I can't stand thirty degrees in the UK. But I can stand forty-three in Greece.
Oh, my god.
Cause of what's going on, like, i- i- it's, the, the infrastructure is different, because that's what you're prepared for. And like in Greece, if we had the same winter with you guys, we'd just freeze.
Yeah, um, so for those of you who just joined, we were looking at Jones's, um. Introduction to what's human geography, um, but we're gonna be moving into the second reading real quick. But before we do. Um, I think one thing has been very clear is that human geography kind of moves away from this idea that we're looking at. Um, environments being shaped purely by what is there. It's also how humans interact with them. And also, all of you have like brought it up as well. Um, especially, Yanni, to your, your point about, um, migrant communities, who I'm not gonna mess up and call them Italian again. Like, they literally brought a piece of where they were from to where they are now, and that shaped culture. Jade brought up how people have, um, had their environments. Um, it may be impacted in terms of like unemployment, but they still have a culture of their own. Um, and so we definitely like. And also, the, the reading does kind of touch on this idea that, you know, it's, we're looking at both human and physical. Um, and they're not, you know, one in the same, so the, the two, the two are coming together. So I think that probably a really good point to include in, um, your write-ups.
Yeah, but I think it's focusing mostly on humans, right? Because it's, it's not talking about ge- geography, though.
No, no, not this point. I mean, we only got to the introduction, but I know some people have read more. So do they, do they wanna add in on what they think of the rest of the reading, like as a whole, and not just the introduction?
I don't hear anyone.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm aware not to move on too quick, because you know, some people might wanna type. Um, if you are gonna type and you don't wanna speak, what you can say is just say like, put like a dot in the chat. And I'll just like wait a little bit longer for you to type what you have to say, so I don't just move on and then you're like, oh.
In, in my, in my opinion, having read like half, uh, I'd say it basically just talks about like how people, um. Like how people's location, uh, affects them. That's basically what Mafalda, uh, not Mafalda, fuck.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. Red flag.
What Melissa talked about, but yeah.
Yeah, right, mate.
I'm not gonna say in class, I don't, I don't say the, the teacher's name, so I, I don't confuse them. But yeah. I was gonna say, it's two foreign names that start with M.
Uh-oh, that's in, that's in the recording now. But now, um, okay, is everybody like, does everybody have like a, a better understanding so far of what human geography is? And what, um, and what, and what, and how it impacts cultural geography, or is people, are people still unclear?
It's becoming clearer.
Clearer.
Get to it a little bit, you know.
I wa- I wanted to ask something, like, wh- what did it mean when he said like, s- spatial analysis?
Great point.
Um, I think that that was like comparing how different societies function within a different borders. And how your behaviors change when you move from different spatial areas.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, yeah, pretty much, um, because on, on my notes here, I've got, um, spatial analysis is a formal technique. Which studies, um, physical properties, so it could be topological, like height differences, geometric, the size of things. Or geographic, such as places themselves, um, and it has, what else have I got here? Um, yeah, it's mainly like geographic data, quite, it's quite like, it's focused on. So that would be like the things, the physical things aspect of, um, the, the, the physical geography being incorporated to human geography to make. Human geography, but basically what Jenny said.
I also have another one.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to ask, because obviously, if you've seen the, if you're a true Melissa fan and you've seen the videos as well. You were there for the, for the first album drops. I was thinking that, because she mentions, she mentions space, place and landscape. And I was wondering how those like, kind of fit in. Because obviously, like, cultural geography, we said, it's looking at people through these things, so I feel like this is like, uh, and something extra. Like, if we don't mention space, place and landscape, is, should we mention it? I, 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 because. It just seems to me like it's a definition that it's, is not necessary, because we're just looking at people's behavior, right? We're not looking at definitions of those things.
You're correct, then. Go ahead, Lorraine.
Can I kind of incorporate both of it? I don't know, because, um, well, the other reading was a space, place and landscape, right?
Yes, like we're moving to, yeah.
So it literally says like space is where some, like, it's, it's a place that's unfamiliar to you. So it's basically a space to you. But for someone who lives there or like knows the place, it's a place for them. So kind of like, say, like, I don't know, immigrants or something like that, I don't know. Um, it's, it's a space for them when they move in, like, to a country or something like that. But then they start incorporating themselves with a culture and stuff like that. So I think that would make it a place for them.
Yeah, but, but I mean, then, in that example, you're mostly focusing on human behavior through these definitions. But I mean, like, because it's, I'm saying that we don't really need to define them, they're not part of the theory. Like, we can mention them, that's what I'm thinking, is like, we can mention them in, like, in your example.
Hmm.
But not, but I don't think it's like that relevant to say like, space is this. Place is basically space with meaning. And then landscape is basically landscape. If you Google it, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I would agree with.
Landscape didn't make any sense for me, because it was just like, why is landscape there if it just means landscape?
I mean, it definitely, I think it, it, understanding the, the terms would impact how you use them in when you're writing them up. Because if you get, if you, if you wanna use the word landscape and what you really mean is, is, is space, you're gonna look like, you look like you've messed up a little bit. Because, um, oh, go ahead, someone's to add.
No, it was me again. So, oh, Jade has raised her hand. Very polite. Go on, Jade.
Very polite, cool.
Um, I was just gonna say, like, um, i- in the reading, it said about how landscape is like from the outside. Like, you, you don't, you don't live in a landscape, you view a landscape as an outsider. And then it becomes a place when you're like, when you've made it your own. And I think they use the example of like moving into uni. Like, the room is just an empty room.
No, but that wasn't landscape, that was a space. The, the uni room was a space.
I've, I've got a reading here from Langhurst, from Longhurst, from the class. I could, I could read those out if, um, it helps people.
Wear that one in.
Because I, I, I read it yesterday, and from what I remember, it said like basically it's a space. But then you find like the carvings of the person before you and you start to put more things in and then it becomes a place. With landscape, I remember that I have written the, uh, Mafalda exam, uh, say, the Melissa example.
Get it right, mate, get it right.
I've never got it wrong before today.
You're excited recording and you've lost all composure.
Yeah, I, I need to forget the name of Faldah. I'm just gonna say, uh, Simon now. Anyways, but I have, uh, wait, considering landscape, landscape means considering how both an area and the look of that are. Uh, uh, of that area are laden with meaning. The object of study can be reality, e.g. a city skyline. Or representation, e.g. an oil painting of a country scene. And then it mentioned the example of the Los Angeles skyline.
Yep.
Can be read as an assertion of the power of big money, big money. And that depiction of certain sorts of rural landscapes have been made to represent a particular ratio, uh, notion of Englishness, I mean.
Yeah, so from my understanding, landscape is when we apply meaning to what we're looking at. Um, it's not necessarily when we're, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to be in it or outside of it, because that's what space and place are. Those are the, the personal, um. The personal inputs to them.
It's something that's too large and too general to call a place, because like you can, but on one hand, you can't. It said like you can't call New York a place, but like you can't really go to a skyline.
Yeah, I mean, well, for me, New York would be a space, right? N- New York is just a destination, but for a New Yorker, it would be a place. Whereas for someone doing analysis, the landscape of New York is a place that has lots of migrant communities. With a mixture of legislative boundaries, because the work is like, it's got its court circuit there, um, as well as being like a political hub. Go ahead.
Uh, I'd argue that New York, since, since like you know stuff about New York, is a place, because it's something to you.
I think, I think that's a probably a, a fair argument, um, but. I don't, I don't think, I don't think they, they negate each other, from my understanding. Like, you, you, something, something can be a place as well as a landscape. It's just like how we look at it, it becomes a landscape, from my understanding.
In this other reading, it says that the way that landscape differs from place is because places are very much things to be inside of. But a landscape, um, the viewer is outside of it. So I think that's the, like, they're very similar, but that's the only difference. You're not like inside the landscape, you're viewing it and applying meaning to what it looks like.
What if I am the landscape?
That's a tricky question.
I think, I think the Raymond Williams bit quite like explains it well, um, in the reading.
Yeah.
The way he puts it. I don't know, I was just gonna say, that, that's good.
Uh, yeah, because one for what Jade, from what Jade's just clarified, it's almost like it's impossible to be inside a landscape. Because if we are analyzing it, you can't be inside the analysis, if that makes sense. Because like, I am not, I am not the ninth circuit of New York, of New York State, whatever, I'm not, um, its communities and neighborhoods. But I can be inside one of the neighborhoods, if that makes sense. So I'm not what makes New York, uh, in my analysis. Even though, even though I might be literally in the things that make up the analysis, if that makes sense. Probably doesn't.
No, I, I, I get it, if, if anyone has any questions. Can we have, can, can I recommend something? We can have, wait, wait, where did my emojis go? I wanted to recommend the crying laughing emoji if anyone has any questions. Because a, a lot of people like, aren't talking, and so I don't know if it's a shyness thing, but I, yeah. But yeah, with place, I just wanted to go back, I think it was saying like, people have general connotations with New York. So when I say to you, New York, you have an image in your mind about New York that's more specific to a lot of places. Because it's like, you have an idea, you have like a picture, that's like, it's basically capitalism, but it's, it's a picture. So it's like, so like the LA skyline, it's like, when you see it, you know, and it's the, and you have that picture in your mind. But you also have New York in your mind. Like, you have some connotations considering New York, where I'd argue if you have that. From like a random place in Greece. But if I talk to you about it, it becomes a place. I think a space is like very general and it has like no, no, no meaning. Space is like very physical, whereas place is like a, a, a space with meaning. That's what I understood from it, at least.
Yeah, I agree.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I also agree with that, yeah.
Nice.
The way I, the way I treat landscapes, though, I usually just associate it with landmarks. And as, as we already discussed, of landscapes, it's like, it's something you view, not necessarily where you, you are at. Or like, if you're in, inside a building, and so like a landmark. Yeah, that's, that's how I see it.
Because, yeah, it's true, because you can't really, it doesn't really make sense if you, you are in a skyline or a la- and you can't really be in a landscape. Now, and that's what I've been said, I guess, but yeah, but I agree, I think it makes sense.
I mean, you can't part of a landscape if someone else, if it's in someone else's perspective, if you get me.
Yeah, but then it's a landscape for him and he's not the per- it's not a landscape for you if you're inside it. You're not looking at the Los Angeles city skyline while being there. I think you, you have to look at it, I. I, I can't, I don't think you can look, yeah, it's. I, I can't, I don't think you can look, yeah, it's from, you can be in someone else's landscape, but you can never be in your own.
True.
That sounds like, uh, the way you said true is like a very deep quote. True, I'll just have it on Instagram as my bio.
I think that's a very literal interpretation, but I'm willing to let it, let it go for now. Oh, I say, I just wanna really quickly just put up like, for the people leaving at one, is anything you wanna go over, um, so we don't like. You say you don't miss out on these last ten minutes. No, okay, Yanni, go ahead.
I was gonna say like, what were you gonna say, cause it's like, we shouldn't let things like slide, not, not slide, but like. You said you were gonna say something different, so we can discuss it, cause it's good to discuss things, cause maybe we haven't understood something you have.
Well, my thing is, is that I don't, I don't think that there's, there's one right answer, so I'm willing to accept your perspectives. And be like, yeah, that's a great way to think of it, because hey, if I always approach it the way that I say, that's what I think. I'm bound to run into a situation where I have to think of it as, wait a minute, if I remove myself from this landscape or this place. I can look at it as a landscape, and that's where we get, and that's, that's why I'm willing to let it slide, because I'm not trying to convince any of you either.
What's, what's your other perception of a landscape?
For, for me, it's just any, any time you attempt to analyze it, that's my understanding, so. I mean, yeah, I'm gonna keep going over the same questions over and over, so just really like, anything like you, you, a space becomes a place when it gives me, when it's. Given personal meaning, but then it becomes a landscape where we wanna analyze it as a, as more than just that, almost a sum of its parts, as it were.
But I don't think a place can be a landscape though, no matter what, it's not like a. It's not like a scale where it's just like space, place, landscape, I think. I don't, I don't know, I, cause I think like a place is a different, like you can, like Abdul said, you can be inside, like Abdul and Jade said. Uh, you can be inside the place, like you can be inside the landscape, so. A landscape, I think, can be a place, but not all of them are.
I'm, I'm agreeing with that, I, I agree with that, cause even if we look at like a postcard, right, and we go, oh, this is a postcard of the. The new, of, of the London skyline, we're essentially saying this is, this is also the landscape, cause what has, what has been chosen here to. To almost represent, cause we've got to the idea of representations, right, to represent London, we'll have like the Gurkha, the London Eye, Big Ben, Houses of Parliament. And those, I guess, four, I think I said four things, those four iconic pieces make London, because those things give London meaning. And that's why I mean that looking at London as a landscape, as a very quick thing, even, but I'm saying as a, a space and place, we can quite literally be inside. The Gurkha, the London Eye, House of Parliament, maybe, um, Big Ben, I don't think so anymore, but we could at some point be inside them. And then we go, this gives me, this, these places give meaning, because I don't know, one day I was at the Gurkha and. It was the first time a bird ever pooed on my head, you know, and you go, okay, now, that, that's the day I, I learned a lesson, kind of thing.
Yeah, but when you're in Big Ben, for example, like you're not in the whole of the London skyline, it's. You have to observe it like from the exterior, so like, it's ma- it's made out of places. But it's not a pla- uh, a place in itself, like you can, you can, you can't say, oh, hey mom, I'm leaving today, I'm going to the London skyline.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, that's the thing, I'm agreeing with you, so it's, it's all good, if, if, if my agreement hasn't come through clearly. I apologize.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if you have like any different input, cause it's. Cause it's, it, it like, talking about it might help get to the better solution, but yeah, if you don't, it's fine.
No, I, I have nothing good to, to contribute as well, I was keeping quiet, to be fair. But um, but should we move on to the second reading then, the, the defining place? Ah, go ahead.
I guess, I guess we're going into a place and space and landscape now, but I was thinking like, isn't it very different from like. The first, uh, like, cause the last one was focusing more on people's relation with their environment, but this is like more of the. Environment's place with people from the people's perspective, while the other one was like. Observing people in their environment, right?
Uh, I think that's fair, for anyone else who's read this reading, do, do they wanna contribute before we try and take, start reading parts of it?
I haven't read it, but I think I'm like talking about like space or place really. Uh, kind of relating back to like Lorraine's idea of when someone first like moves to a place, there's like something. I don't know if people know this, cause I haven't read the reading, so I don't know if it comes up, but it's like topophilia and topophobia. So it's like when people have a sense of love for a place, not a sense of love, like a good connotations with it. And then the top phobia is like when they don't have good, so I feel like that also relates to people's idea of place. Even if they haven't necessarily been there or have it.
Yeah, I, I think also, I'm going to the idea of like simulation, which is a little bit off topic, but go ahead, who was gonna speak, I think Jade was.
Uh, oh, I was just gonna say like, um, when they talk about the privatization of places, when like company takes over a place. Um, for the meaning kind of changes, that was kind of industry, interest, uh, the investing.
That is a really good point.
That's, that's all, just before I leave, so.
Yeah, cause, cause I mean, you highlight, like, um, it does get brought up in the what's human geography. And that is, you know, power structures do impact how things are perceived, I mean, they quite literally highlighted economic development. In the previous reading, um, and e- economics is almost directly tied to power structure, so yeah, um.
I'd say though, in this one, it was also argued that it was, it was in the reverse. Uh, in the opposite way, cause it said like, uh, geography has basically led to the power dynamics of a place. Right, am I the only one that read that?
Yes, you are the only one who read it, no.
I, I didn't mean like, am I the only person who read the reading, I'm like, did I read it wrong? The way I perceived it was as well, like it mentioned that, uh, geography and the way. Play a place is basically the geographical restrictions and allowances. Give you the opportunity, uh, like create different structures, like, um, I, I don't remember the examples it, it had. But, um, for example, I think monarchies maybe are like, uh. Like the fact you have a queen still, although she had like basically no power, except being immortal. But, like, that's, I think that's definitely like a part of your history, like having no oppression. Your, like, I mean, as a country, being, not being under rule and stuff, cause you're in a different like island. You weren't taken over by the Germans, you didn't have like a, a part where you were like under someone else's rule, so it's not like. You, you felt like free the whole time under the queen, so there has been no issues with the queen. And like now that it's not a person with the rule, it like, she doesn't put like people in jail for no reason and stuff. But in Greece, we had like, uh, uh, after the war, we had like a king. And we had like a civil war to kick them out, and it was like people wanted to join Russia, some people want to join the U S. Some people wanted to, oh, Lorraine's leaving, bye Lorraine. But yeah, I wa- I was saying like, I think it, it, it definitely, like, for example, like in the U K, it's easier, I'd say to like. Own land, cause there's like no mountains and shit, so like you can own like very. I wouldn't say like it's more, like the climate is different as well, but at the end of the day, I'm just, I, I, I'll just keep blabbering on, so I just wanted to say that. I think it just like, it goes the other way as well, like geographical restrictions help or like. Uh, change the power structures and stuff, which I think we'll see in the other reading, but yeah, I just wanted to say.
Uh, go ahead, Abdul.
Wait, shall I read it?
I just left like, uh, yeah.
A little message for us, a, a little reedy reedy for us.
The thing that popped up was basically just establishing my viewpoint, but yeah.
Yeah, um, I also wanted to say that, um, we're also seeing like old sentiments being, uh. Kind of like disregarded, uh, what I mean is, uh, the whole thing about like when you're working with the city, you're seen as like a salary man. Or like, uh, white collar, is it? I, I don't remember the. And, um, when you're outside of the city or not, uh, not as close. You seen as like a countryside or like a country boy, you know, you know those phrases. Like, we, we see, um, we see changing like ideas or changing, um. Viewpoints of like where you live or where you work, cause uh, now it's like almost every location is starting to become homogenized where. Essentially, countrysides are not as like prevalent anymore, like suddenly every town has become like a big city. So I just wanted to say.
One, one minute, you want me, yeah, for the sake of recording, I just wanna, uh, read out what Abdul said, he says, um. Pyramids, if you're observing it, albeit a picture, a postcard of a physical digital representation, it starts as a landscape. When you discuss it, let's say going to it, whereas where it is etcetera, it's a, it's a space, because you're discussing country capital, so on and so forth. Then it becomes a place when you go there, take pictures, work there, live there, perhaps proximity and activity is relevant when considering space, place and landscape, go ahead.
I wanted to say like maybe a great example of like, uh, uh, geography affecting like people. Like their work and everything is the U S, cause they're, they're obviously a very kind of united country. Uh, I mean, like, cause they're like, you get like people very far from the capital that are very fanatic. Like, cause when you're saying about like, oh, the U S is great and you have all that patriotism, it's not about fucking Oklahoma. And people in Oklahoma are the most radicals, and like the, the difference in like. Everything from an Oklahoman, from the redneck shit to like the New Yorker, from like New York to Los Angeles. It's basically huge, like they, they, they do different work. That like in, in, in Los Angeles, like they, they do coke for sport. But in, in New York, people like, uh, like obviously in Nevada or Denver, you get like huge houses for like three dollars. But in New York, New York people were saying like you live in a flatmate, eh, in a flat. With seven people and then thirteen rats, and you know all of them by name. If you have a living wage, but it, it's, it's like, that kind of like changes your whole personality. When you live, like, you live, you live a different New York, basically, if you're rich and if you're poor, so, and you live like, uh. The same Nevada or the same Kansas or Texas if you're eh, either. Like, cause you have tho- those whole like America, like I, I sent you the truck thing yesterday, like even the trucks are based on locations.
All right, yeah, so for context, um, there was a, a post about European trucks and American trucks and how they're different and why they are. Um, and basically, yeah, European trucks have to go around corners and don't do long motorway miles, whereas American trucks, people live in them. And they're on the motorways, they're on the highway for however many hours, um, but yeah, I get you're oversimplifying, Yanni. Um, but it doesn't matter if you're rich or poor, but yeah, you, you, you make, you make a point, like the wealth gaps and wealth divides. Um, are also, going back to the idea of highlighting power structures and, um, communities. And where your culture might be, where even though you might live in the same place as it were. Alright, um, should we move on to defining, defining place, or do you think we've kind of like hammered this home a bit too much then? Or, like, who, who wants to go for it? Just show of hands, or, or say yes, I.
Wait, how do I show hands? Yes, I, yes, I.
Yes, I, so we've got one, one reading, yeah, alright, cool, two, try to do another poll.
Oh, but I guess if you, like, what are we gonna do if people say no, you, I mean, if you don't really want to, you can't leave.
Wow, wow, so he's, he's going, going full hardcore, um, alright, fair enough, so let's go for it, um. Do I, how, how much, how much reading is there of this one? Alright, then I'm gonna, wow, okay, this is longer than I thought. This whole, this whole chapter's an introduction. In this case, I'm gonna use, um. They do, they do, they do, yes, yes, Jenny. Uh, do you wanna read the summary of the paragraph, or not?
I don't mind reading it if Jenny doesn't want to, although I'm foreign, so I don't know if, I don't know if you can understand my accent.
I don't mind, there's a few, I mean, cause I see, I see three summaries at the end, um, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, so it's got space and place on page fifteen. Um, this is for the recording, the crosswell defined, uh, place, eh, place in place and introduction, uh, the PDF. Cool, um, so should do what someone, someone do, uh, space and place, someone does, place and landscape, someone that does the. So just the last two, so, Yanni?
Wait, do you want me to?
Uh, top of page fifteen, uh, space and place.
Do you want me to share the screen, to share my screen?
Uh, you could do, yeah, go ahead, start sharing, do you have the permissions?
I, uh, yeah, obviously, I'm second in hosting. Okay, so wait, yeah, I can share, do you believe? Wait, page fifteen, right?
Yeah, that's right, so two pages up, we're good.
Okay. Defining place, space and place. An advertisement for a large furniture shop in my Sunday paper read, transforming space into place. Such an advertisement cannot rely on an in-depth understanding of the development of the concept of place. And yet it speaks to one of the central themes in work on place. The ad suggests that we might want to take the rooms we have recently bought or rented. And make them mean something to us by arranging, by arranging furniture in them, making them comfortable literally and experientially. Humanistic geographers are unlikely to agree that the mere purchase of furniture is going to. Enact such a transformation, but they will recognize the intent. Space is a more abstract concept than place, when we speak of space, we tend to think of outer space or the spaces of geometry. Spaces have areas and volumes, places have space between them. Yi Fu Tuan has likened space to movement and place to pauses, stops along the way. What begins as undifferentiated space becomes place as we get to know it better and endowed it with value. The ideas space and place require each other for definition. From the security and stability of place, we are aware of the openness, freedom and threat of space and vice versa. Furthermore, if we think of space as that which allows movement, then place is pause. Each pause in movement makes it possible for location to be transformed into place, Hit the Tuan nineteen seventy seven. Consider the relationship between the sea and land along the coast between Seattle and Vancouver. In his book Passage to Juneau, the travel writer Jonathan Raban tells of his trip by boat along that shore. Alongside his travel narrative, he tells of the voyage of the explorer Captain Vancouver in his ship HMS Discovery. In seventeen ninety two, Vancouver's task was to map the coast and name it as he went. Making it a place of empire, naming it, naming is one of the ways space can be given meaning and become place. Vancouver's journal reports the seemingly nonsensical movements of na- of natives in their canoes in the sea around them. Rather than taking a direct, uh, line from point A to point B, the natives would take complicated routes that had no apparent logic. To the native canoeists, their movements made perfect sense as they read the sea. As a set of places associated with particular spirits and particular dangers. While the colonialists look at, looked at the sea and saw blank space, the natives saw place. Uh, two worldviews were in collision, and the poverty of white accounts of these canoe journeys reflects the colonialists. Blindness to the na- native sea, they didn't get it, couldn't grasp the fact that for Indians, the water was a place. And the great bulk of the land was undifferentiated space. The whites had entered a looking glass world where their own most basic terms were reversed. Their whole focus was directed toward the land, its natural harbors, its timber, its likely spots for settlement and agriculture. They traveled everywhere equipped with mental chainsaws, and at a glance could strip a hill of its covering forest. And see there a future of hedges, fields, houses, churches. They viewed the sea as a medium of access to the all-important land. Substitute sea for land and vice versa in that paragraph, and one is very close to the word that emerges from Indian stories. Substitute sea for land and vice versa in that paragraph, and one is very close to the world that emerges from Indian stories. Where the forest is the realm of danger, darkness, exile, solitude and self-extinction. While the sea and its beaches re- represent safety, light, home, society and the continuation of life. Raban recall, recounts the visit of the German geographer Arle Kraus. While working for the Bremen Geographical Society in eighty, eighteen eighty one. He was astonished by what he saw as the local Klingit's ignorance of their place in the world. Which to him was dominated by the enormous mountains that towered behind the small strip of land they inhabited beside the sea. In spite of the fact that the Klingit is constantly surrounded by nature. He is only acquainted with it as it offers him the necessities of life. He knows every bath that lends itself to fishing or the beaching of a canoe, and for these, he has names. But the mountain peaks themselves, even though they are outstanding on account of their shape and size, are scarcely noticed by him. The Klingits had many names for the sea, but the land remained unnamed and seemingly invisible. To the explorers, the sea was empty space and the land full of potential places waiting to be mapped and named. But this was the mirror image of the Klingit sense of place. Space then has been seen in distinction to place as a realm without meaning, as a fact of life. Which, like time, produces the basic coordinates for human life. When humans invest meaning in a portion of space and then become attached to it in some way. Naming is one such way, it becomes a place. Although this basic dualism of space and place runs through much of human geography since the nineteen seventies. It is confused somewhat by the idea of social space or socially produced space. Which in many ways plays the same role as place. Uh, yeah, I'm going into the next one, right?
Go ahead if you want.
Okay. Another concept that frequently appears alongside place is landscape. The idea of landscape has a very particular history, which dates back to the emergence of mercantile capitalism. In Renaissance, Venice and Flanders. Landscape painting emerged with the rediscovery of the science of optics, new techniques of navigation. And the development of a new class of traders. Landscape referred to a portion of the earth's surface that can be viewed from one spot. It combined the focus on the material topography of a portion of land, but which can be seen with the notion of vision, the way it is seen. Landscape is an intensely visual idea. In most definitions of landscape, the viewer is outside of it. This is the primary way in which it differs from place. Places are very much things to be inside of. Again, a literary example illustrates this. In Raymond Williams's, uh, novel Border Country. Uh, Matthew Price returns to the place of his childhood in the Welsh Borders after spending many years at university in England. He's surprised at what he finds when he gets there. He has forgotten the qualities of life that made it a place. And replaced it in his mind with a landscape. What follows is an examination of the gap between the idea of the village as landscape. And the idea of the village as a lived and failed place. As Matthew realizes, he has become an outsider in his own village, he reflects on his change of, of perspective. He realized as he watched what had happened in going away. The valley, the valley as a landscape had been taken, but its worth forgotten. The visitor sees beauty, the inhabitant a place where he works and has his friends. Far away, closing his eyes, he had been seeing this valley, but as the visitor sees it, as the guidebook sees it. Later in the novel, Matthew gets back into the routine of the village. It was no longer a landscape or view. But the valley that people were using. No longer a view from a hill, the valley was once again a place. Landscape refers to the shape, the material topography of a piece of land. Oh, I usually join. This may be apparently natural, though few, if any, parts of the earth's surface are untouched by humans. Or it might be obviously human or cultural landscape of a city. We don't, we do not live in landscapes, we look at them. Wait, do you guys want me to go into the third one as well?
There is a third on my bad, um, I couldn't see it when I was doing a quick, I thought it was free. Um, does anybody wanna like have a quick recap before Yanni moves into the third one, or should, should he continue? Thumbs up from the reactions tab if you want to continue.
I, I can't view the reactions, but yeah.
You've got a green light, buddy, go ahead.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate. An important theme of this book is that place is not just a thing in the world, by the way of understanding the world. While we hold common sense ideas of what places are, these are often, often quite vague. When subjected to cri- critical reflection. Most often, the designation of place is given to something quite small in scale, but not too small. Neighborhood villages, towns and cities are easily referred to as places. And these are the kinds of places that most often appear in writing on place. There is little writing on the corner of a favorite room as place at one scale or on the globe at another. Yet as Twan suggested, there is something of place in all of these. So as it turns out, places as things are quite obscure and hard to grasp. But place is also a way of seeing, knowing and understanding the world. When we look at the world as a world of places, we see different things. We see attachment and connections between people and place. We see worlds of meaning and experience. Sometimes this to, this way of seeing can seem to be an act of resistance against the rationalization of the world. That focuses more on space than place. To think of an area of the world as a rich and complicated interplay of people and the environment as a place. Is to free us from thinking of it as facts and figures. To think of Baghdad as a place is in a different world to thinking of it as a location on which to drop bombs. Uh, at other times, however, seeing the world through the lens of place leads to reactionary and exclusionary xenophobia. Racism and bigotry. Our place is threatened and other have to, and others have to be excluded. Here, place is not so much a quality of things in the world as an aspect of the way we choose to think about it. What we decide to emphasize and what we decide to designate as unimportant. This book is as much about place as a way of knowing as it is about place as a thing in the world. It is as much about epistemology as it is about ontology. And then the remainder of the book. Are we gonna have a discussion or shall I read the whole thing again?
Don't, don't, you don't need to go into the remainder of the book, that bit's kinda like, talks about a bit we can't read, so. Um, so yeah, let's, let's discuss, so, um, thoughts on. I mean, we've, we've kinda gone over all the differences between space, place and landscape. However, does it, has anybody had like a, a change of position, or do they feel like their position's like more ingrained now that we've gone through the reading?
Nah, hey, I think it really was more cemented, right? Cause we were agreeing at the start and I think it, like, if anyone has anything different, I don't. I'd love to hear it, but I feel like it's, it's kinda the same that we were before.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, yeah, I don't really see much of a difference.
Yeah, thi- this one kinda connects, I feel, that's the only thing. It connects things more to. To people, whereas the, 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 wha- what Melissa was talking about was more of. Uh, place, landscape and space defined. But this one, like, kinda like puts them all in perspective with like the human environment and stuff.
Yeah, it's like a personal recollection as well, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gives, it gives good examples too, but yeah, the personal recollection and the examples, I think make it really clear. Um, yeah, I don't know if there's anything anyone wants to say.
No, I think, I think, I think we've kind of said as much that can be said at this point, um. Unless we're gonna start looking at our concepts that kinda relate to it. Um, at the bottom of the readers, obviously, there's that list of references, um. If anyone, if anyone wants to include in their write-ups of. A cultural geography, probably use some of those, and look at some of those, so you don't have to always use the same. You know, same dodgy references that everyone else is using, so. That's my tip.
Wait, did you say you use the references that the book uses?
Yeah, like, you can look at them, not, don't just like directly go, oh, yeah, what was this one say? Agnew said this and he didn't say that, but like. They're, they're good points to look at, to say, oh, wait, look, I'll take a quote from here maybe, or see what this person said, cause some of these are. Obviously a little bit older, like we've got nineteen eighty seven, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty four as well, oh, nineteen eighty four. But then also like, we can also see how the idea evolves. We've got one from, um.
There are some like really old ones, there's one from like nineteen ninety six.
Wow, thanks, Yanni.